Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to call the Sumter County Council regular meeting for Tuesday, October 24th, to order. Let us please stand for the invitation and meet for the regular meeting. Please be.
Let us pray. Our dear, kind, heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing this council to come to the table again to do the business that you've appointed and launched us to do. We acknowledge you as the one in whom we live, move, and have our being. We know that the earth is yours and the fullness thereof. And as we come together for this meeting, we cannot forget the countries that we know of that are not the home of the free and the land of the free and the home of the brave. We just thank you for allowing us to still be able to call it our country in tears of thee and to be in the home, the land of the free and home of the brave. And God, as you bless us, we ask that you remember them, remember the Israelites, remember the people in Ukraine, remember all of them, even the perpetrators that you have suffered hearts and just so that they will not have to study more anymore. And as we go through our agenda, we ask that you give us wisdom, understanding, clarity of mind, and a tender heart to be able to consider all the items that are before us and we would do it with kindness. We ask all of these things and the one who gave his life that we might live. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I'd like to be led by the pledge of allegiance by your veteran, Mr. Sean Cusco, who served our country since 1991 to 1999. He's a war veteran who served three tours on duty supporting Operation Desert Storm and Desert Shield. He currently lives in County Council District One. Thank you for your service. He's not here.
I plead the allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, where it is, unbroken and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
When we adjourn today, I would like to adjourn in honor of Stephen Fouchet. Most of you know Stephen as the lobbyist for the city of Sumter. He was injured in a rickshaw accident last weekend at the USC football game, fell in his head, fractured his thumb. And last night, they took him off support and he is no longer with us. He was lobbyist for the city of Sumter and also my business partner for 20 years. I'm sure you've seen him before. I know Gary has met with him and I've seen Senator McAlveen in the audience. He's very familiar with him. He's just a bright, bright mind. And he's the guy that's been delivering all of the budget surprises for Sumter, working with Senator McAlveen, Representative Smith, Senator Johnson, and members of the delegation. Fifty-seven years old. So if council would agree with me on that, just to adjourn in his honor. Absolutely. Thank you.
We have motion to approve the agenda. So I move to property segment that we approve the agenda in discussion, seeing none of your favor. All opposed. Motion to approve the minutes. The property segment that we approve our minutes on video two, here, October 10th, in the discussion. There are none of your favor. All right. I'll close.
I'm just abstaining because I wasn't present.
Land use matters, RZ 2321, Jeff.
This is chairman of association with this. I won't propose myself with this. Thank you, Mr. Page.
This is RZ 2321. This is a request made by Brown Investments of Sumter LLC. They are the authorized agent for the owner of the property, who is Larry Parker. And this is a request to rezone a parcel of land that is a little under eight and a half acres from light industrial warehouse to heavy industrial. The project location or the site location is at 495 Myrtle Beach Highway. The location is in red in the map before you. It is just located to the west of the intersection of Myrtle Beach Highway and the 378 bypass on the north side of Myrtle Beach Highway. So some context for you with aerial photography, this is the site as of early 2023, based on the latest aerial imagery that we have. The site is zone, currently zoned, light industrial warehouse. Surrounding zoning is also light industrial warehouse, except on the opposite side or the southern side of Myrtle Beach Highway, where the zoning is GR, light industrial So this is a request. The applicant is requesting the HI zoning designation to establish land uses that involve the sale of used automobile parts with onsite dismantling and storage vehicles. This land use is classified under the NACE codes 42314. And per the county zoning development standards ordinance, it's only provisioned in HI district. So there was a prior request to change the zoning designation in 2020 to HI that was ultimately denied. The request can be considered again since more than one year has passed since that denial. The previous request was a seven acre park portion of this property. Since that time, it's been combined into one property, as you can see on the map here. There is a nonconforming use, an ongoing use for automotive sale, used automobile parts with onsite dismantling of cars on the 1.5 acre property that is allowed to continue as it's nonconforming, not subject to discontinuance. If the rezoning is approved, it would allow this use on the seven acre property as well as would not make the use on the 1.5 acre property nonconforming, it would remove those nonconforming requirements in case of a discontinuance. So the seven acre portions of the property has been the subject of ongoing enforcement, civil litigation. There was an exhibit in your staff reports that fully detailed all the activities up to date. So rezoning the property to HI would allow the applicant to move forward with the process of legally establishing the desire to use on the property. The property is primarily influenced by the priority commercial mixed-use planning areas. It's a priority investment area centered around the intersection of Myrtle Beach Highway and the US 378 bypass. It is, this requested use is inconsistent with this comp plan designation. However, staff notes that there is uses like this that currently exist along this corridor and in this general area. The planning commission did recommend approval of the request. It was not a unanimous vote. It was a four to three vote with the statement below that although the rezoning of the property in the HI district is not consistent with the 2040 comp plan, again, 2040 comp plan commercial with chief recommendation, the existing pattern of development in close proximity to the site is similar to the proposed use. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions out of staff.
Any questions, staff? Mr. Chairman, the three planning commissioners that proposed the redesignation, did they give any reasons for their opposition?
The one primary, the comments that were gleaned from the meeting from that would be that this was a gateway into the city and that, you know, increasing scale to an HI district specifically to allow this use would be not in line with what they would want for the gateway into the city of Sumter.
Were there any comments about pollutants to the soil and water?
I believe we've received some, I believe I've been made aware, some correspondence that have been sent to county council members about concerns about the use and how it would, you know, run off into the soils. I would say that they're subject to a state-level stormwater and EDS, National Pollution Mission Disturb Program review at a state because of this particular use. So it falls outside of the county's MS4 review. It's a specific state-level review. There would be, they would address some of those concerns that that has not been obtained to date and would have to be obtained before moving forward with the use on that seven acre portion.
Yes, I saw the correspondence that you're speaking of, and it reminded me of the recent article that I saw regarding forever chemicals being in our rivers and streams and the caution against eating certain kinds of fish. So it just, those two things just soar around together in my mind. So I appreciate you sharing that information with us.
Any other questions or comments, Jeff? Thank you, Jeff. Prior to council doing our second reading or approving of this improvement, we will have a public hearing. I will now declare public hearing open. All those wishing to speak or, this is only a request, please proceed to the podium and state your name for the record. Mr. McAlveen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm a member of the council. Can I close this stuff down? Is that good?
Yeah.
Members of council, I appreciate the opportunity to be here for you for a few minutes tonight. I try to be brief with remarks that I have. Before I start, I wasn't expecting this, but Council of Washington, thank you for what you did on behalf of my friend, Steve Fouchet. I mean, it's obviously been a rough week with that. You and his other business partner, I'm thinking about both of you along with his family and obviously his boys and his mother, he's now lost his second child. But sort of Steve was a wonderful friend to me. He actually paged my dad back in the house, back in the eighties, back in the eighties. That's how I came to know him. But he was a friend of Sumter and his lawsuit failed, so I appreciate council taking that action. Didn't have anything to do with that. But I'm, again, Thomas McAlveen. I know all of them. I'm a partner, been attorney at the Brian Law Firm. I've been my entire career, 20 years. And during that time, I accounted William R. Brown as one of my clients for almost the entire time in fact law. As y'all, I know y'all are aware, he along with his wife, Tammy Brown, is here tonight as the principal of Brown Investments, who resolved this rezoning request. And just to level with y'all, I'll tell you why I'm here. I've entertained the speaking on behalf of Mr. Brown tonight. This council weighs the August 23rd, 2023 recommendation of Sumter City County Planning Commission to approve this request at the 8.4 acre property located on Myrtle Beach Highway. You have the tax back number, it rezoned light industrial warehouse to heavy industrial. Now, I want y'all to know that I asked Mr. Brown when I'm prepared to answer any questions that you may, I'll try to answer the questions that you may have about this request, but in short, I will just tell you that Mr. Brown has been doing business, mostly while called this side of the county, for over 50 years now in some sort of capacity. In my estimation, he is an astute businessman. And in my estimation, I think that he will work with you, members of council, and other people in that community, if he is given access to the ability to conduct his business that he seeks to conduct. And ladies and gentlemen of the council, I think that what he seeks to do is certainly consistent with the type of activity that other businesses have been allowed to conduct within the vicinity of the property that you consider for rezoning tonight. Now, simply put, would be very correct, this is all Mr. Brown seeks to do, all he wants to do is to sell used automobile parts with onsite dismantling, storage of automobiles, just like staff has told you. I don't have to tell council, because you're awfully real as it is, but if you look at the prevalence of new businesses in Sumter County, there, I can see less and less growth on this side of the county than I call the eastern part, as most of the development, new jobs are in different parts of the county. But if you look at what I would call Myrtle Beach Highway corridor right now, I've driven down a bunch in preparation for today's hearing, there is certainly no shortage of heavy industrial in the near vicinity of the property that you are considering tonight. Furthermore, in this area in particular, there is certainly a concentration of local businesses that have to do with the automobile industry. This is an area that I would say, if you look at the business community, is dominated by all the businesses that sit here right now. In fact, one of the businesses that is currently being used for the exact same purpose that Mr. Brown seeks to use this property for, one of the businesses is being used for the exact same use that he intends to use this property for, and that business, as I understand it, is currently zoned for planned development. My understanding is that that business has had permission, has been granted permission despite the zoning, to conduct sale of used automobile parts, dismantling of vehicles onsite, same with Mr. Brown, for over five years. That business, as council knows, is a strong force for Mr. Brown's purposes. And I understand that business that I'm referring to has been a good corporate citizen in that area. They've done the right things. My understanding is there have been a few complaints. Mr. Brown always has the same treatment and ability to carry out that same sort of activity on his property. And ladies and gentlemen, I feel comfortable coming to my assurance you that he wants to do that in respectful, clean, orderly manner. As much as you know, because you live out there, just like I am, there are currently cars and other vehicles positioned outside of the perimeter fence that surround most of the furniture of the property in question. If you look at it right now, that's what you're going to see. The question has been posed to me as to whether Mr. Brown intends to move those vehicles back behind the fence, out of sight from the roadway. I want to say tonight, members of council, that should Mr. Brown be permitted to sell used automobile parts with onsite dismantling, storage of automobiles as requested, and one of his neighbors is currently doing, then the answer to that question is unequivocal, yes, this neighbor will be moved. I would hold out to you, ladies and gentlemen, also, that as it currently stands, the property that's in question tonight, this 489 reserve, is hardly the least needed living thing or property in that area, not by a one-shot. Maybe that's subjective. I think most people would agree if they were to buy it. And I'm certainly not here tonight to cast stones or to disparage any other business or any other person. I'm not going to do that. But there is another business in close to Mr. Brown's proximity, which really has inventory right now spilling to the edge of the roadway, and it's been that way for as long as I can remember. But that's not, that's not why I'm here tonight. I'm here because I spoke to Mr. Brown directly, and I'm comfortable assuring you that if he's allowed to do business on the property as requested and approved by a planning commission back in August, then I'm confident that he will work with you and that he and his wife and business partner, Tammy Brown, is here tonight, will be out of their way to have purposes that he meets, presentable, and respectful. I believe they'll be courteous of their neighbors in the area, some of whom understand and ready to support of his own request, others who may be against. If I could tell, in any way, you'd still take those conversations and discussions with the owners of the council or owners of that area, then I'd be very happy to do that, serving that role. Like every citizens in business over in this side of town, where my business is also, I certainly have an interest in the way our community presents, the people that come here to visit, and those people that live here for years. But I also have an interest, ladies and gentlemen, in making sure that in an area where we're constantly trying to do businesses and do jobs to come here, that we also take care of the partners that are part of the work of us and the tenants. And that's our small business, our small business men and our small business women. The people that own those small businesses, and they've been here all along. Those are people like Tammy and one of my brothers. The brands and mountain investors aren't asking you for special treatment. They just want to be treated exactly as early businesses in the area have, and want to be able to use their property to conduct business in a way that is consistent with other land uses in that area. So again, I'm a member of the council, I'm asking you to adopt the recommendation of the planning commission, or at minimum, to find a way to enable Mr. Brown to conduct specific business that he seeks to conduct on the property of 495 Myrtle Beach Highway as set forth in his request for rezoning. I appreciate your time, Mr. Chairman, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Mr. McAlveen, you answered one of my questions, and I've been in contact with you to discuss that. The biggest, those wrecked automobiles got outside the fence, but I understand that you have talked with Mr. Brown, and he agrees to move them back behind the fence. My second concern, though, is the for sale sign that is on the front of it. And if that, if Mr. Brown were to sell that property and be rezoned to heavy industrial, what can go in there? That is my concern.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. And I should maybe should address that during my comments. I think that's certainly a reasonable concern. As members of council, you're being asked to make policy decisions that could affect everyone in the area. You only understand that. We want this property to be used consistently, consistent with other uses in the area, as I said earlier. But with regard to the for sale sign, I don't think I have to tell any members of council or any staff, planning commissioner, staff of council about the history here. And I know the history. And, you know, maybe I have to say that discretion is a better part of valor. That's probably why I'm standing here, I'm asking Mr. Brown tonight, okay? And let me just say this, and I haven't addressed that with him, and I'm in the middle of this. Mr. Brown is frustrated. Y'all know that. I think that when, knowing him as a client, when people work with him, I think they'll work with anybody. But I think he has been frustrated by the fact that he acquired this property, assuming he can do the same things that would be done in the area, right across the street, down the road. And the for sale sign is more than likely, more than anything, him getting on. Because I believe that if this rezoning request is denied, or if he can't use the property as requested in the rezoning request, I think he will sell it. And quite frankly, from talking to him, I think he will attempt to move this business, probably declare it accounting, possibly the county. I think he'll, I think he'll seek, I think he'll seek refuge in neighboring county to run his business. That's not what he wants to do. As I said, he's a native of Sumter, right? His family's all here. He's at the softball field, just like me, all the time watching his granddaughter play. He wants to be in Sumter. He wants to continue in the Sumter community. So to answer your question, I get that's a real concern, you know, is he going to give the rezoning request? Is he going to turn around and sell it? That's a real concern that I don't think is anywhere on his radar, because again, I did address that with him directly. And I'll say, I understand, Mr. Chairman, I mentioned alternative ways. Maybe I shouldn't get into this, but I mentioned the fact that there is a neighboring property right now that is really engaged in the same sort of land use that I believe is under planned development currently. I don't think Mr. Brown, we don't want rezoning request to heavy industrial, whatever way for him to get, to be able to use his property, just as the one down the street that his using neighbors. I think there's more than one way to work this out, but if that, if that gives the members of council some comfort, I think he'd certainly be open to that, too. I just think he wants to, to conduct business on the property as described in requests as I've described to you tonight.
Any other questions, Mr. McAlveen? I have a couple. Senator, thank you for being here tonight. Always good to see you. In the correspondence that I got, there were several questions raised, including what's the honest process for drainage and/or storage? Automobile fluids, who inspects the process? Where is the documentation? Has there been a DEHAC study? What mitigation procedures exist? Then it says something that kind of gives me some concern, which is, there's a statement that says it's worth noting, the applicant already demonstrated a tendency to cut corners with respect to local ordinances by clear-cutting seven acres and erecting a fence without permits. That gives me some concern if that's true.
Understood, councilman. And I, and I told you when I started that I would attempt to answer any questions that I could. I am certainly not any expert on some of the issues that you, that you referenced, but I think staff mentioned also, if I'm not perceiving the property, the property with, specifically with the disposal of certain materials, I would assume it would be subject to DEHAC regulation, to get DEHAC inspection. Don't hold me to that. That's my assumption. Councilman, I heard you were right. You mentioned something about forever chemicals, and that's something that's obviously very much on my mind also. I think you're talking about things like PFOS and PFAS.
Right.
They typically come from firefighting phone used to put out things like, like fires on a runway. I don't think that's the sort of chemical you would find on this facility, but certainly, you know, Mr. Brown, if he's, if he's able to use this property as requested, would be, would be subject to the same regulations, same inspections as anybody else would. As to past use of the property, councilman, I can't directly speak to that. Candidly, this is the first time that I've been engaged, which was specifically to speak to council on his behalf tonight, with regard to this request. And then others are here to speak also, perhaps some of them can answer those questions, but to try to be as direct as I can, I would assume that in any of the materials he'd be disposing of, he'd be, he'd be subject to those same type inspections and that same type of scrutiny, whether it's DEHAC or the EPA. I can't speak to that.
Last question. Do you know if he's met with the community to have discussions about any of this stuff?
I think that, so I would say, yes. I don't, I don't believe precisely who, but I think that, you know, if you look at what's around him, as I said earlier, all the lawyers all around him and in that corridor, I mean, there's countless places right now that, that have to do with the automobile industry on Myrtle Beach Highway. I believe that most people that are in his direct proximity across the street, neighbors, what I've been told is, is that they're comfortable with this. Certainly, I recognize that other people in the area may not be, and I assume they're here to testify also. But what I can say is, I've represented Mr. Brown for a very long time as, as his attorney. I have known him to be someone who's reasonable, and I think he certainly would not want to offend anybody in the area with the way his property looks or anything else. If he can avoid it, and quite frankly, I think that if he, if this rezoning request is granted, that property will look a lot better this time next year than it looks right now. And I know I'm not wrong about that, but I feel comfortable standing before you to tell you that.
Thank you, Mr. Jeff. Any other questions, Mr. McAlveen?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate y'all's time. I got an obligation to excuse me, but I appreciate council, and don't admit I... Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak before this?
Chairman, my name is Tammy Brown. My husband and I own Brown Investments of Sumter LLC, doing business with American Auto Sales. We applied to get the eight and a half acre property at 195 Myrtle Beach Highway rezoned from light industrial to heavy industrial, because that's what the planning department told us was our only option. We want to expand the business from one and a half acres to include additional seven acres purchased a couple of years ago. We are already licensed on the one and a half acres to sell recycled auto parts. This zoning would allow us, rezoning would allow us to utilize this additional seven acre tract of land that now sits empty because we haven't been allowed to use it, excuse it, for anything. I believe there's some question as to our selling of property. We did have it listed after the injunction was filed against us on the seven acres. That contract expired in February of 2023. We just hadn't taken the sign down. We had several interested buyers, but none of them wanted to have it begun with Sumter County Planning Department. We also were set to purchase the L. Lathan Oil Company property for a used auto dealership, used tires and repair shop for our vehicles. Planning Department told us it would not be feasible for us to attempt to have this business there, but six months later, Max Mobile Car Care has an auto dealership, sells used tires, and has a cleanup shop at this same location. He was just passed right through without any hassle at all. Our eight and a half acres have been inspected by DEHAC and the Army Corps of Engineers. Both then to de-scale us a clear report. In fact, the Army Corps of Engineers inspector stated that she had never written an approval letter for anyone before. I have that letter with me. We are set up to make sure there is absolutely no contamination occurring on the property. All fluids are drained from the vehicles before parts are removed. The used fluids are contained until the recycling company comes to fix it up, usually about once a month. We constructed an eight-foot solid fence across the front of the property so that no salvage vehicles or carts are visible from Myrtle Beach Highway. Right now, there are some vehicles parked in front of the fence because we aren't allowed to use the seven acres due to the injunction filed by Sumter County. Our plan has always been to have our salvage vehicles behind the fence and out of sight. The only vehicles out front will be our sales inventory for our car dealership. For over 50 years of business in Sumter, we have always kept a neat, clean place and have never been described as an eyesore or disgrace, as Council of Dayton did at the last meeting. There are a couple of businesses within half a mile in either direction of us that are operating similar businesses on properties on light industrial, planned development, and even a small corner that's on residential. These businesses have their privacy, solid fencing, as we do. You can look right through and see used parts and salvage vehicles. We would like to be able to expand our business like our neighbors have been able to do, except having our salvage inventory hidden from street view. In fact, we don't necessarily need the property to rezonate heavy industrial if county council sees fit to treat us the same way Carolina Truck and Trailer was treated when they came before you. Thank you for your time, and I hope your vote will be to give us a chance to grow our business.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Anyone else wishing to speak before RZ 2321?
Anyone else wishing to speak before, or the two and three? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against the rezoning request? Please come to the microphone, state your name for the record.
I'm Mr. Chairman, Council. I'm Dr. Allison Lathan. Myself and my Aunt Barbara Rockington, we own, own the ten acres that is directly across the street from the facility in question. No one has ever spoken to me or partnered about that. And we've heard a lot of comments about how it looks now, and yet it looks bad. It looks terrible, it's ugly. And we have family up north, all over, there must be probably sixty, seventy people who own that land, it's air property. Several have expressed interest in coming here and building homes. My aunt just recently almost spent $10,000 clearing it off so we can start things, and to have to look across the street and see this monstrosity. It is, it's ugly, okay, it's ugly. And yes, the junk cars are horrible. And the fencing, I don't know what kind of fencing that is, but it's not aesthetically pleasing. And we are not going to feel this way, but friends of Swan Lake Irish Gardens, the president, Catherine Ferricks, sent a letter here in opposition to the rezoning, saying that Merle Beach Highway is a direct corridor into Sumter, and it needs to be aesthetically pleasing, and that site is not. So I am vehemently against that. It does not look good. It is a threat to the environment. You have fluids going into the ground, into the groundwater. Our land, there's wells, other people, they have wells. You have wildlife on that area, right across the street, in the trees. So this is just not a good situation. And I've heard everything that Attorney Macklin said. If there's some way on the planet that the owners can clean that up, make it look better, who knows, maybe we can sit and talk. But the way it is now, I'm totally against it, everyone in my family is. And we have also spoken with legal counsel, so we are prepared to exercise our rights as landowners, property owners, as citizens, because just like small businesses and businesses have rights, so do people who own land. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bate.
My name, as you stated, is Barbara Rockington, retired schoolteacher who's back in education because of the need. Our property is in a, is in a very good location, and is basically a residential area from Memers Road all the way back coming, all the way back up Boulevard. And when I went out to start some demolition on the trees, I was told that the car dealership was no longer there, that it was a salvage yard. And I did see a lot of cars. I don't remember a fence, unless the fence was over towards the right of a building, but there were a lot of cars that were not pleasing to see. And because if the family is coming down to build homes and whatnot, that might take, that's more of a salvage yard across the street, because nobody wants to come out of their doors and watch that. And I was reading a letter from Kim Harbin, and another one here from Mary Branding, who are against this. And I noticed they were talking about all of these fluids, these pollutants, and I'm saying, oh my God, our water system is coming from that ground. And the majority of the people out there, their water comes from the ground. They don't have public water, except for the houses there, son's house. Also, what is something else? Oh, that went back to Flint, Michigan, and we don't want to go there. But thank you for allowing me to speak, and hopefully we can resolve this.
Thank you, Ms. Rockton. Anyone else, please?
Hello, my name's Kim Harbin, and I was at Planning Commission. I was one of the three that opposed. I have hopes of rezoning, and most of my points have already been taken, but because of that would allow expansion of the salvage yard. And the salvage yards, according to EPA, are one of the most highly potent, potentially polluters of our groundwater. They have potential to leak a variety of chemicals, such as the oil, gasoline, diesel fuel, antifreeze, sulfuric acid, and mercury. We're deeply concerned about the potential impact that this expansion would have on the groundwater in the surrounding residential and agricultural areas, especially those that still rely on the well water. And I'm concerned about in particular how the process of draining is done and who inspects it. The owner can say that he does this, but what standards are taken? How often is it inspected? Who does the inspections? And there has to be some written log of how it's done. What mitigation procedures exist in the case we have another, you know, thousand-year storm, have torrential flooding? It's worth noting that the applicant did demonstrate a tendency to cut corners by the clear-cut seven acres and erecting the fence, and they did not have a permit. Industrial parks or vacant land near the Sumter County landfill would be more suitable locations for this type of business. This salvage yard is an eyesore, is unsightly, on a highway that serves as a major gateway into Sumter for anyone that comes from I-95 South. And why would we want to enlarge it?
Anyone else? Public comment portion is closed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd love to make a comment, I could. I do believe the issue with contamination is not going to be an issue because I think DEHAC regulates it and checks it yearly. I think he's got, anybody who has one of these businesses has a lot they got to go through with DEHAC. I think he's got enough woods to buffer his property. The only issue I have with this piece of property is heavy industrial. I do not think this property, I'm not comfortable rezoning this property heavy industrial. I mean, there's, and I know that he may, he's going to do good with it, I'm sure, but my concern is the zoning. And this property, I would not support heavy industrial. So my motion is to defer, send this matter to our land use committee, and let's come up with a solution.
We have a motion and a second to defer and send this matter to our land use committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to defer, please say aye. Aye, aye, all oppose. Motion is deferred. I'm going to have to stay for now. Motion passes. This matter has been deferred and will be sent to the land use committee at the next council meeting, possibly.
Yeah, thanks, I know that everybody wants to ask, so I said it would be.
Next item on the agenda, committee reports.
Let's see, the Public Works met today, and we had Karen Hyatt show up there, and she went over our letter, the budget for our letter of progress, and there was no extra time.
Thank you. Report, or, I'm sorry, this is, would you please look at Mr. Bates? Okay, monthly reports, this is Bate.
Council members in your package will have information concerning Military Appreciation Day and the NAACP celebration is on November the third. The Military Appreciation is also on the same date. And Morris College will be having a parade, and Mr. Nixon may have some information on the parade as well. But all those that plan to participate in the parade, I do need to know that quickly. Sumter Green Fall Feast is on Thursday, and Council members, if you're interested, please like to know that. The Sheriff's Department September report is in your package, and that's it.
Thank you. Anything else to report, Mr. Nixon?
Chairman, I'd just like to take this opportunity to recognize the Public Works team and our letter for the quadrant, third quadrant cleanup, which was letter kickoff was held this past Saturday, that was held at Lakewood High School. We also received a check from Duke Energy for $2,500 to go toward our litter program and our litter efforts, which is high at Intertin, but good news. We, again, had a great turnout, participation, it's nice to see young folks involved. But thank you for participating in that. And, but also, I think in Ms. Hyatt's presentation, she said that the clear litter cleanup for the county employees would be the seventeenth, but I believe that would be in there, I believe it's going to be on the ninth, but we'll confirm that with council members. And she mentioned the name of the road, I just don't have that front of me, but anyway, plate will be on the ninth, we'll get that information out, too. And, Britain Road, thank you, Britain Road, thank you, that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Coming out to the public comment portion of our general citizens' desire to speak during public comment, a limit to up to three minutes. Comments to be made to the chairman, if there are any questions, they will be answered after the meeting, public comment portion is open. Anyone wishing to speak, please state your name for the record.
Mr. Chairman, council members, staff, and guests that are still here. I'd like to bring my name. George Bates, I live in Wedgefield. I'd like to bring my mostly request to County Council again for more sheriff's deputies and more sheriff's deputies' equipment, especially out in the far reaches of the county. It is taking far too long for sheriff's deputies to respond to incidents and calls in the Wedgefield area. I would like to ask that the backlog of personnel be filled as a minimum, and if you can find some more money, well, we'll take the extra deputies as well, and staff, and equipment. Thank you very kindly for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bates.
Good evening, everyone. Brenda Williams is my name. I represent myself. I live in two over circles, Sumter, South Carolina, and I represent our 501(c)(3) nonprofit, Ultimate, Ultimate Society, Family Unit Incorporated. I want to mention again about the level of poverty in Sumter County. It is significant. In the city of Sumter, it is significant. And whatever funds Sumter County gets, even if it's a dollar fifty cent, you're ten percent of that money toward taking care of the needs of poor folk, people that live in mobile homes, twenty, thirty, forty-year-old mobile homes. We appreciate the help, the funding that the offer, you know, give to our organization, to organizations like the Sumter United Ministries, and they take care of a lot of poor folk's needs. And they need money to keep themselves in operation. My husband and I have a free medical clinic. We see poor folk from the city of Sumter, from Sumter County, from Lee County, from Clarendon County, from Lexington County, from drive from Columbia to our free clinic. We have an agreement with Prisma Health here to give free blood work for these individuals. These are not lazy people. Try to insure these people. These folks work every day, they need and motels and housekeepers at hospitals and clinics, and they just don't have enough money to get insurance. The jobs oftentimes offer insurance, but they can't afford to get the insurance. So they fall into practice, I said all that to say this. Whatever money Sumter County gets, set aside, it's ten percent for low-income families. Lastly, that Connect 37876 Highway, think about what's going to happen to say lax. Seventy-seven people cross that highway every day on foot. Those are statistics that have been verified by the AECOM engineers that have been hired to study this problem. Seventy-seven times a day, somebody's walking across that highway. That is not happening anymore, yes. So a couple of you do serve on the SUEAX community. Please, service, when SUEAX meets, let us think about the people trying to deter folks across and across that highway. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, Dr. Room. Anyone else? Public comment portion is closed.
I want to say, I want to thank IT for giving the honors for preparing and working tonight, okay? Since IT, my, my, my.
One more thing, this is, this is Chairman, I just want to acknowledge that the month of October is breast cancer awareness month, and I just want to thank everyone for your kind words, your thoughts, and your prayers. As I visited with my daughter when she went through a procedure two weeks ago, and I missed the meeting, she's still fighting. She is a breast cancer warrior at this time, and we know that she's going to be a breast cancer survivor when it's all over with. So we thank you for your prayers, and cancer is just so prevalent. I have other kinds of cancer in my family, as well, other family members are struggling. So your prayers and thoughts and kind words are much appreciated, thank you.
If you're officially adjourned, Mr. Washington, I would like to, not the one, no.
If we could bow our heads on behalf of Stephen Boucher for a moment, please. Amen.